Good evening and welcome to the regular City Commission meeting. It's our first meeting in July, today is July 2nd. And I'm calling to order our regular meeting. And Mr. Wiley, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Scott Wilson is excused tonight. Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Adam Marle?
Here.
And Mayor Denise McGriff?
Here. So how hot is it there?
Um, it's actually cloudy today. I don't know. It was been 110.
Well, you just keep that there. Um, for those of you who are able, please stand and join me in the flag salute. Or join us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight on our agenda, we have one proclamation. And I want to thank the Parks and Recreation Department for giving me this fabulous shirt, which I wore tonight specially for this proclamation. It was from one of our tree planting events that I participated in along with many other people. So this is a proclamation declaring July Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas Parks and Recreation are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Oregon City. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical, mental health of people who live near parks. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas Parks and Recreation is a leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, and education. And whereas Parks and Recreation programming and education activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, environmental and environmental education, they are critical to childhood development. And whereas Parks and Recreation increases the community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation is an essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provides a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas Oregon City recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Now, I therefore, Denise C. McGriff, Mayor of the City of Oregon City and the City Commission, do proclaim July 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month. And I will sign this document on the second day of July 2025. And thank you to our Parks and Recreation staff. Did you want to say anything, Scott, other than? Thank you. All right, so it is going to be such. Right, next on our agenda, we have, I believe, some presentations this evening. And let me flip back over to my agenda. We have one public comment on, uh, one item on person who wants to speak on something that is not on the agenda. Joyce, would you like to come forward, please? And you know the drill, so. Turn the mic on. Green light. The mic. And bring it closer to you, please.
Now the green light's on.
Yes, and bring it a little closer. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. My name is Joyce Gifford, resident of Oregon City, and I serve on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. And thank you, Mayor McGriff, for that proclamation for the month of July. So last week, on Wednesday, Jerry Herman and the Rivers of Life, wanting to get people out on the river, gave a boat tour for some people. And I know Commissioner Mitchell was also there on the boat tour. And it was a wonderful tour, talking about what we have here in Oregon City. But as we departed the tour, we were handed this book on the Oregon Wildlife Viewing Guide. And in this viewing guide, there are 123 sites listed. Oregon City has two sites, and these are throughout the state of Oregon. Um, one of those sites is at John's Inks Keep Center up at Clackamas Community College, but the other was Clackamette Park. And so this talks about all the birds and wildlife you can see at Clackamette Park. So on last Sunday, June 29th, William and I took a walk along the Cove Trail and through Clackamette Park. And on his Merlin app, which identifies birds, over a dozen birds, different types of species of birds, were identified down there at Clackamette Park. And just want to let you know, Oregon City is listed in this little booklet. So it makes us famous throughout the state. And so please enjoy the parks this summer.
Could you make sure that staff gets a photocopy of that cover so that we can get some additional copies of that? I'm assuming it's put out by State Parks? Is that who publishes it?
Actually, this was put out by, um, Plastic Kills Wildlife.
Well, still, make sure they get a copy of the cover so that we can get some more. Because if we're listed, we should be having that out for our people.
All right.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. That's awesome. All right. Item number five is that we have an update from the manager of the Water Environmental Services folks, and that would be Greg Geist. And just for the record, I also serve as Oregon City's representative on the Water Environmental Services Advisory Committee. And we're getting the clicker. Hopefully, there's enough cold air coming down here for you, because I'm going to put my jacket back on.
All right, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Greg Geist. I'm the Director of Clackamas Water Environment Services. And thank you for allowing me to be-- oops, I'm hitting the button. Being here tonight, I do, I come here every year and give an annual report about the activities that we've worked on the previous year, what we're planning for the coming year, and other items that I think that you might be interested in. Okay, so for those people who may not know, Clackamas Water Environment Services serves about 190,000 people, mostly in the urbanized area of Clackamas County. And we provide sanitary sewer, stormwater services in some areas, and habitat restoration. Uh, in some areas, we provide wastewater treatment, like for Oregon City. In other areas, we provide both treatment and conveyance. Uh, that's the pipes and the pumps that give sewage to our facility. Uh, I will read the vision of West, because I think it's important. Be a collaborative partner in building a resilient, clean water future where all people benefit and rivers thrive. And I want to focus on that collaborative part. I mean practically, our facility here in Oregon City takes what goes down your toilet, and we make three things. We make clean water. We make electricity that we partially use to power our facility. And we make a biosolids material that is a natural fertilizer that goes out to eastern Oregon. So that's kind of who we are. Yeah, sorry. Uh, this is the area that we serve. This is the urbanized area. We actually have five different wastewater treatment facilities. Two, one in Oregon City, which is our flagship facility, one in Milwaukee, and then others that serve smaller areas of the community, like I said, 190,000 people. Uh, we are also governed by the Board of County Commissioners. And we also have a West Advisory, a Citizen Advisory Committee that includes both Mayor McGriff and William Gifford from Oregon City. So thank you for that. Next slide. Uh, just where your basic ratepayer dollar goes, 60%, 62% of your ratepayer dollar goes to operations and maintenance, 9% to debt payments, and 29% to infrastructure and financing. Pretty straightforward. Uh, this isn't working, sorry. Just to give you an idea, I know you folks are into student rates, like everybody else. The, this is our rate profile history. We've had a series of approximately 5% rate increases for the past five years or so. And we have a capital improvement plan. We have, uh, master plans for all of our facilities and our stormwater system. We have a long-range financial plan. And the bottom line is, we know what we need to build, when we need to build it, and how we're going to pay for it. Uh, and I feel very fortunate as a utility in Oregon to be able to say that, because a lot of people can't. Uh, we also recently had a conversation with the board and with our advisory committee about updating our system development charges. So the amount of money that we would charge a new home or business to connect to our system. Uh, and we did a whole rate study and an analysis of our five-year capital improvement plan and came up with a number of $12,200 and something dollars. That would be the maximum SDC that we could set. So that would be truly growth pace for all of the growth-related projects. Uh, we went to our advisory committee to get direction on how we, if we want to get there, what we want to do with our SDC. It's really not our decision, and it's ultimately up to the Board of County Commissioners. Uh, the Board of County Commissioners said, okay, we want you to ramp up to that $12,200 SDC, but we want you to do it instead of five years, which was the recommendation from the advisory committee, in 10 years, which amounts to about a 3% increase per year. So just wanted to be transparent about that. In the, in the whole time of having the West Advisory Committee in its current forum, this is, was the first time that the board didn't directly take a recommendation from the committee, which was, yeah, not a great first, but a first nonetheless. Uh, some of the things we've been up to, hopefully, everybody's heard about our Clackamoe project. We just recently completed the, the drive, as they call it, so that the boring out from our facility into the river. That was very successful. We now have capacity out to 2080 for our outfall, anyway. And you're going to see us back out there soon, maybe next week. Uh, we're doing some more in-water work to install what we call diffusers, which are pipes on the bottom of the river. Uh, and then we'll be connecting that back up at our facility next, this coming winter. So the scary part is over. Uh, I also should mention that we, it was a scary project. It was an expensive, scary engineering project. Uh, and we did have one snafu. We got it stuck. Um, and it was stuck for about 10 days. And it was getting really scary, like what, if, if they couldn't have gotten that machine going again, it would have added just millions and millions of dollars. They finally did, but in the process of that, they created a sinkhole in John Storm Park underneath where the pavers are for the public restroom. So I'm proud to say, though, that we, as of this month, or last month, we've replaced those pavers, and I think everybody's happy. So sorry for the inconvenience.
What happened to the sinkhole?
We filled it in.
Okay. Well, you said that, you know, you just mentioned the pavers, so.
Yeah, no, no, we started with that. Uh, I mentioned energy earlier. I just, my point is, we're always constantly thinking about energy. When it comes to energy, my, our mantra is make more and use less. We got some pretty decent wins last year, saved about $44,000. Or no, we got a $44,000 incentive check back. And you achieved a 4.1% reduction in our energy consumption. And if anybody has ever been to the Tri-City facility, it's a massive industrial facility full of pumps and motors. And so it's something that we take very seriously and we're constantly working on. Also, again, the collaboration part, I always want to mention. When we do that, and the regional INI reduction program, I think is just a flagship for that. I want to thank Oregon City for embracing that. They truly maximized the program. We've had, we've got 10.5 million approved so far. Eight projects approved and three completed projects. And in 2024, we reimburse the city over a million dollars for that. Excellent. Uh, we also have the Tri-City Good Neighbor Program. We recently, uh, we had 2,4000 to OC Parks and Rec as part of that program. Oh, and then this year, the city wanted to bank some funds. So, and according to the original IGA, that, there was a kind of a sunset date on that. So we worked with the city and said, okay, yeah, we'll, we'll extend that deadline. So that was a good, good example of partnership. And then some of the things that we do out in the community. Movies in the Park, Member Oregon City Chamber, Business Alliance, Rotary Club of Oregon City, and we recently started a Rotary Water Club of Oregon City that's focused on water. And former Mayor Doug Neely is a member of that, so that's super fun. And that's all I've got, and I made it. Less than 10. Happy to answer any questions?
Yes, please.
Thank Mr. Geist. I agree. I think the partnership with Water Environmental Services has been a huge benefit for the city. I think the INI program, I think for a community with the infrastructure, the age of our infrastructure, I think we've been able to do much more than we would be able to do in a much quicker timeframe. And so I do really do look forward to seeing what the results of that work that's going on is. And so I just thank, thank Greg for putting, helping, supporting that program. The agreement for Parks and Rec, another great opportunity where we've been able to leverage a different, additional funding from, from West with our money, as well as State Parks and other grants to do projects. And then, and this is a little thing. You know, when we had the sinkhole at John Storm Park, if you're ever in front of the restrooms, it's a concrete circle, and then there's bricks on the inside. A small portion of the bricks failed. Could have very easily replaced, you know, 100 bricks, whatever it was, right? And Greg just said, no, we'll redo the whole thing. It looks great. So I just really do appreciate it.
A fun fact on the INI program for Oregon City. You guys have really embraced that program. I had our financial people look at the revenue that we collect within Oregon's, from Oregon City customers for the service that we provide down there at the treatment plant. And about half of that goes back to the city, either through the Good Neighbor Agreement or the INI program. So, and that's, you know, you can say, well, why is Oregon City getting subsidized so heavily? It's because you guys are doing the work that's going to keep the water out of the system, that's going to save all of our ratepayers money over time. So thank you.
Gentlemen, are there any questions, comments?
Just, what does the Rotary Water Club do?
Well, we meet once a month, and we find projects out in the community to support. Uh, we're going to be at the, uh, Oregon, in an event in Oregon City here shortly. What's the one that's coming up?
First City.
Yes, First City Celebration, and we're giving out, um, emergency supplies and the, I forget the name of the straws that you can use in an emergency to drink essentially out of the river if you needed to. So stuff like that. It's community stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Anything? And again, I just want to say thank you to Wes and also to our Public Works Department who have collaborated. Obviously, I could talk about the INI, because I'm the poster child for the INI program, but it's been working great. I've heard great response from the community about that, and people are very supportive. Um, it's moving on to the next neighborhood in the city. It's been in Rivercrest, and it's going to go to McLaughlin, Berkeley Hills. Also, thanks to Wes for their support of the Chamber. You sponsored the State of the City, which we were much appreciated for. And thank you to all the other West members for their work on behalf of their communities. And thank you and the staff.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure.
All right, so we're going to move on to our next item, which is adoption of the agenda and review of the consent agenda. Is there anything on there, gentlemen, that you want to pull, or is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to adopt the consent agenda. Let's have the roll call.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Adam Marle?
Aye.
And Mayor Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mayor, can I say?
Absolutely, please.
I guess I hadn't really seen this clearly before, but it's interesting. One of the things in there is related to the funding or grant funding for the housing capacity analysis that we used to do. And I thought it was kind of interesting. The last time we did this, it was called a housing need
Analysis.
Analysis, and now it's a capacity analysis.
Yeah, I'm glad you noticed that.
I think the rules have changed around us. I'll just say that.
Yes. Another thing to add to my list to talk to DLCD about. All right, so we have tonight on item number eight, we have one public hearing. And I'd like to call up the one and only Finance Director, Mr. Matt Zuck, who's supported by a cast of thousands, who get the work done. So we have Resolution 2520 supplemental budget for the 2025-27 biennium.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, this evening, we have before you an opportunity to create a new fund, which was not known at the time that we adopted the budget. You recall that an Oregon budget law does allow us to do this and requires a public hearing in order to, in order to create a new fund after the budget's been adopted. You recall back on May 21st, 2025, City Commission approved Resolution 2512, which called for a separate fund to care for the cemetery grounds. The timing of such was so tight that we did not put it into the adopted budget on June 4th. So we're here. Uh, we also didn't know that the Commission, whether the Commission would approve it until May 21st. And so it's easy enough to do at this point. And what you have before you is a proposed supplemental budget. Um, this supplemental budget was advertised in Oregon on June 25th, 27th. And Resolution 2520 would accomplish the creation of the new fund and the adoption of the budget. The budget is just going to recognize revenue in this first biennium. There will not be any appropriation for expenditures. This is intended for years down the road, so. With that, I present you with-- This is intended for years down the road. So with that, I present you with Resolution 2512 and Exhibit A with the budget. And that is my staff report.
Okay. Well, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on Resolution 2520. Mr. Wiley, is there anybody online that would wish to comment on this? I see no one in the audience. Do we have any questions of the Commission? Mr. Smith? Okay, I will close the public hearing and call for discussion or a motion, or both.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2520.
Second.
Do I read it? You read it?
It's a it's a resolution.
Yeah, okay, we don't have to. I just want to make sure. Okay, all right. So on the motion, then?
Commissioner Mike Mitchell.
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Adam Marl.
Aye.
And Mayor Denise McGriff.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Resolution 2520 is hereby approved.
Thank you.
So on thank you for all your work, and thank you for you and your staff and all that they do to make everything happen behind the scenes look seamless. All right. Next on our agenda is item number nine. We have Item A, Resolution 25-17, Adjusting Solid Waste Collection and Disposal Rates Effective August 1, 2025. And that would be our collaborators at Oregon City Garbage Company, B&amp;B Leasing, and our Public Works Director, Ms. Dana Webb.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Dana Webb, Public Works Director. And I'll allow staff from B&amp;B to introduce themselves.
I'm Pam Blue, B&amp;B Leasing, and this is Will Mathias, our CFO.
Good evening, Commissioners.
All right. So tonight, we're here to present to you a rate adjustment for the solid waste collection and disposal rates. So just briefly, I'll go over the state regulations that allow the city to hold the franchise and set the rates. So Oregon Revised Statute, Chapter 459, oversees solid waste management within the state and allows local cities and counties to regulate the solid waste within their communities. Chapter 459A oversees the recycle and reuse program and really sets that focus on reducing waste through reuse, recycling, and recovery. And then Metro has a regional waste plan that looks at the entire metro region and how we address garbage and recycling. And it provides a blueprint for achieving that vision. So within Oregon City, we are within that metro boundary. So we fall under that regional waste plan. And then locally, our municipal code, Chapter 8.20, is our solid waste collection and disposal chapter. And so that Chapter 8.2 oversees and kind of sets the guidelines for setting the solid waste and recycling rates within Oregon City. And so in that chapter, it identifies these criteria that we look at when we're addressing rates. So cost of providing the service by the franchisee, the expected future cost increases for those services, the equipment needs, replacement and new acquisitions, compliance with laws and technological changes, franchisee investment and need for a reasonable return on their service, comparable rates in similar sized cities, public interest in fair and efficient service, local wage scales, management costs and disposal fees, and then recycling impacts, both cost savings and added expenses. And so as B&amp;B prepares their rate request, they look at these items and then provide to the city what their proposed rate increases.
So in the rate comparisons, what we're requesting tonight is 4.35%. And you can see both a column of what the current rates are by container size and what the proposed rates would be. And you can see that compared with other cities within the area. Some of these cities are a little different. So Portland does every other week garbage collection versus the weekly. That generally is the case with most cities. And Canby is outside of the metro regional waste boundary. So they pay about 16% less in disposal cost than the other cities in the comparator. On the 20-gallon rate, Oregon City at the proposed rate is the lowest. At the 35-gallon rate, Oregon City is third lowest. Gladstone and Canby are lower. Again, Canby being outside of the metro regional boundary is a little different. And then the 65 and 95-gallon rates, Oregon City is on the low end. Portland, as you can see with those green boxes, is lower. But again, they they're every other week garbage collection. So their service level is is a little different. And the primary reason for the rate adjustment request is the metro rates are going up 5.9% again this year. So just to give an idea of the customers and the breakdown by container size and how they're affected. So a little over 60% of our customers are in a 35 or 20-gallon container size. And we have 10,300 customers approximately. So the vast majority are in that 35-gallon container size. I also just want to make a public service announcement for our Recycle Plus service and just make sure that the residents know that this service is available and we're glad to offer it. It's for non-traditional items that wouldn't go in the recycling bin. But these are items that are harder harder to recycle. And we offer this service. It is an opt-in service. There is an additional charge. It's $2.50 per month, and then $9.25 per collection. And we we have 56 customers in Oregon City. And on average, they do receive collection four times a year. That's what they've requested on average. So that cost on an annual basis is $67.50. And it's that's a pretty low cost compared to what other options may be. And so certainly, I mean, the the container is 18 gallons. We encourage people who are interested in doing more to recycle. This is a great service. It's pickup schedules are the first and third Wednesdays of the month. Excellent. And one more public service announcement. I don't know if all the residents know that there is an opportunity to get batteries out of the waste stream. We we actually prefer that. They're they're able to be recycled. They cause fires when they're in our trucks, in our garbage trucks.
Is that what the picture we're seeing?
That is. Yes. And so they not only cause fires with the garbage trucks, but at the transfer stations. So what what we offer to all residents is that you can put these batteries in your glass bin in a Ziploc bag. Alkaline batteries need to be taped. I'm sorry. Alkaline batteries don't need to be taped, but all other batteries do need to be taped at both ends. And also, we would ask, one of the more common batteries that causes fires and issues for our trucks is the batteries that go on your lawn equipment or your power tools. Please include those in the glass bin as well, and we'll handle those and get those recycled. Any questions for us?
I'd like to have some more, give you a little, get a little more information about the Recycle Plus. I noticed on the list, if you want to go back to that particular slide, I wish that we were not, I wish that we were not having clamshells. I'm assuming those, are those the plastic ones or the Styrofoam ones?
Plastic.
The plastic. Because I've noticed a lot more businesses are starting to use those. And with a lot of people doing takeout, I don't, I want us to do it. But I also would like to figure out a way, how do we discourage people and businesses from using those? Because I don't know where they go. I mean, you're collecting them, but what is the recyclability of them? Which I, you know, I still read Resource Recycling Magazine. So they say a lot of different things.
Yes. So they, we we take all of these materials to KP Recycling. They're just a reload facility. They take it to Far West Fibers. They have a outlet that is able to sterilize them for reuse.
Okay. And then I noticed that there's been a new emphasis about you've got clothing and towels and things like that. We're trying to get people to not dump clothing into the landfill. Because there's some business, I believe, that takes them and shreds them and uses them for what I heard is maybe padding of this, that, or the other thing. So that's another thing that would that we don't need to have going into the waste stream.
So that's what we do with the the clothing as well. Now, we encourage, if it's good clothing, certainly, there are other opportunities that where that can be reused, reworn. However, if it's if it's bad, if it's no longer able to be worn, we, again, through that same path, KP Recycling and Far West Fibers, those get turned into rags, or shop rags, or other household rags.
And then you had one more thing on that list?
We do. We have two more. The plastic film, plastic bags and padded envelopes, those, the outlet for that is generally like your composite decking. And and then the compact fluorescent light bulbs are broken down into the raw materials and reused from from the raw materials.
I don't find that many residential folks are using, you know, the fluorescents anymore. I mean, everybody's been switching over to LEDs. But I know a lot of the businesses still have some of those. I see them in different places that I go into. So it's a good thing we've been, again, try to get those out of the waste stream. In my last discussions with Clackamas County Recycling, are we still working on the service for non- restaurant folks to do the food waste? How are we doing on that?
So Clackamas County, they they have someone on staff who goes out to customers who should be on the food waste program to get them to get them signed up. I think they did have maybe a little turnover in the position. So it might have slowed down for a little while. But they're they're actively working on getting restaurants and any customer who would need to be in compliance with the metro waste plan into compliance. And we offer that service. It's bundled within the rate.
And then how far away from it being residentially available? I think I asked this question two years ago when we were talking about it.
Well, that's something perhaps we can get back to you on. We being residentially available, that's a service that we could prepare a proposal for.
Well, yeah, we can get Clackamas County to come in, see where they are. Because I know that it's an eventual goal, which I think would be great. Again, another thing that's being diverted, you know, from from the landfill, which is fantastic.
There are, there are a few cities that currently offer that. And certainly, that's something, you know, we can do more work.
Yeah, I think Portland, doesn't Portland offer it?
They do. They do.
Yeah, I forgot. I'm glad you mentioned that. I forgot that they have every other week. And I was talking to somebody I know, a friend in Portland. And I said, oh, I've got to put my, you know, it's Wednesday, I've got to put my bins out. And she kind of looked at me puzzling and said, what do you mean? I said, we have every week service. She says, oh, we only have every other week. And I said, well, sorry.
Yeah.
So you had also just one more thing on the 20-gallon. So we in in the service area, we only have 896 people that are using the 20?
Only 896. Most, most folks really try to work their way into that 35-gallon. 20-gallon's pretty, pretty small. But we do only have 892 right now.
Oh, 892. Okay, yeah. Well, I'm one of those. I use a 20. We switched from the 35 because we just weren't generating that much stuff.
And we do encourage, you know, if customers call in and they're looking for ways to kind of manage their bill a little better, it's one of the things we encourage, you know, recycling as much as you can, you know, use that yard to reap in. But if you can, by doing that, if you can get into a smaller size container, that will that will help the garbage bill.
Yeah. It wasn't so much the bill was just, I'm not generating that much. My family wasn't generating that much things that needed to be thrown away. So we just got rid of the 35 and went to the 20 because it made more sense. So it's also easier to schlep around, too.
It sure is.
Anything? Okay.
I've got two things.
Yeah, go right ahead.
I'm a little embarrassed that in the 18 years that I've lived in Oregon City, I didn't know that you offered that Recycle Plus program. And I know that the interest is there for some people in the community. So hopefully, there's a way that you can work with our City Communications Department and figure out a way to promote that. Because I think you'd get a lot more uptake if if more people knew about it.
How long has it been in existence?
Since 2023. And and we recognize, too, we've modified the messages on our bills to highlight it more. And there was recently in the Trail News, a post on it that's really fantastic. So we're, we're trying to get the word out more on it. It is a great service, and we offer it at a really affordable rate.
Well, I don't feel quite so bad now because it's only been two years that I haven't known.
Well, I didn't know about it.
I want to bring up one other thing. And I talked about this the last time we went down that road. And that's whether you want to call it incentivizing the smaller can or disincentivizing the larger. And I don't have, first off, I really appreciate the partnership with your company. And I don't, I don't want to do anything to disturb that because you're a wonderful partner and you provide a great service. But rather than 4.35% on all four sizes on residential, could we consider, go with the 4.35 on maybe on the 35 and the 65, but leave the 20 where it is at today's rates, and take whatever amount that would have generated and add that on to the 95-gallon. Because I look at that, and going from 65 to 95, you can throw out 50% more garbage and pay less than 10% more. So I would love to see that 95-gallon can have, have, have more of a disincentive for use. And, you know, like I said, I, you know, if that creates nightmares for you in some other way, then.
It's a great idea.
But if that's something we could consider, my fellow Commissioners.
I think it's a great idea. I think, again, you know, there are some institutions and folks that do need the 95 and 65. But everybody could do their part to reduce, you know, reduce the consumption. Because, you know, they ain't making any more land. And we can't continue to keep burying it because it's not sustainable over the long haul. And that's not a pun. Do you have any objection to that?
Well, first, I'll get to the first thing that Commissioner Mitchell brought up, which was something that I was thinking as well, because I wasn't aware of the program either. And I often get people approaching me and asking, why don't we have Ridwell in Oregon City? Why don't we have these different services? And so knowing about this, and I think highlighting it for our residents is something that we ought to be doing. And I'm glad to hear that it's something that you're pursuing as well, making sure that our our residents are aware of this. As it relates to what Commissioner Mitchell said, I do agree in concept. My only hesitation would be, who are we disproportionately impacting? And what kind of, I see that the what was shown to us were the single-family rates. And so assuming that it's only for a single family, and it isn't necessarily like business or entities like that, then I would be fine with that. Yes.
He's only talking residential. Yeah, I would, I would agree. Rocky, what do you think about that idea of trying to incentivize less waste by spreading the additional cost to the people that have to use the larger containers?
Unless there's a concern from B&amp;B or any issues that they see with it, I have no problem.
No concerns at all. We're, we're glad to do that.
What do you think?
We, we definitely support that. And we can, we can look, we can revise the rates to push that cost from the 35 to the 95. I'm sorry, yes, from the 20 to the 95. I apologize. Yes.
I would, I would appreciate that. I think we all would. I think it's. I think it sends the right message. Because it's just, it's frightening me every year when we do the Metro Enhancement Grants and look at the amount of money that we're getting from a dollar, a ton. It's great to get the money, but it's absolutely frightening how much gets thrown away. So anything we can do. So thank you. And once again, thank you for your partnership with us.
Thank you.
If you drive around on garbage nights and you see some of the stuff that people are tossing, which they probably should not be tossing. I mean, because you can see it because their garbage can is overflowing because they're not breaking down their boxes in the gray one or doing whatever. But, you know, one of the services I think that's just been really helpful to residents is the, is our brown bins and the yard debris. I know it gets a little crazy in the fall when, you know, all the leaves are falling. And, you know, I have four extra cans that I have to fill up with the maple leaves that fall from the trees adjacent to my property. But, you know, be that it may, they're providing their environmental support by shading and all that. And so, you know, it just gets dumped every week. But that's a, that's a great service. So where should we go from here?
So they were hoping to have their rates effective August 1st so we could bring this back on the July 16th meeting with a revised rate schedule.
We're supportive of that.
Thank you for that.
Yep.
Thank you. We appreciate it. And so just so I'm clear, was it to take, was it to hold the 20 at zero?
Yes.
And put the 20 increase into the 65? So the expectation, I'm sorry, into the largest, into the 95?
Yes.
Okay. So the expectation is that the 20 gallon rate would stay at its current rate?
Yes.
Okay.
And still land at 4.35 weighted overall.
Is there a way to spread that further?
We could, we could, but now you're
Well, I know.
Starting to reinvent the wheel.
They'll figure out how to do it. I mean, I just think it should, maybe could spread it across everybody a little bit. But if you want to go 95, I'm okay with that, so.
Well, the reason I landed on 95 is that there's such a small difference between 65 and 95. And that's a, that's a lot, that's like putting down another 35 gallon can every week.
Yeah, it is. It is, okay. All right, well, we will do that. Thank you so much for taking that suggestion.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
We'll get that going. Okay, next on our agenda, we have ordinance number 25-1009, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City revising the city code by adding municipal code Chapter 8.23, outdoor burning and declaring an emergency. Take it away, Chief.
Mayor Commission, good evening. As you remember, this was brought forward at the June 18th regularly scheduled commission meeting. During that meeting, there was discussion about the ordinance. And the commission requested language change to Exhibit A, Section D, specifically 2, 3, and 4. Those changes have been made and is being brought back for approval. So with that, if you want to have further discussions, we can, or if we're good with it.
I think we're ready for a motion.
Perfect.
Do you want to make it?
I move to approve ordinance number 25-1009.
I'll second it and it will say outdoor burning and declaring an emergency. So anyway, take it away.
One thing, you want to make sure you want to say the approval of the first reading of. I know it's not listed, but Yeah, that wasn't in the staff report. So I will amend it to say, I move to approve the first reading of ordinance 25-1009.
Second. And we're declaring an emergency.
So it's all at once?
Yes.
Ignore me then, I'm sorry.
That's why I said, and declaring an emergency.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Okay, so I will rescind that again. Where are we?
I'm going to read it by title.
Read it by the title and get the emergency part in, yes.
Got it. Ordinance number 25-1009, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City revising the city code by adding municipal code Chapter 8.23, outdoor burning and declaring an emergency.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Adam Marl?
Aye.
And Mayor Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And it can't come too soon. Just as a postscript, we have a number of fireworks stands in our community. And I know they all have to get business licenses. So were they made aware of some of our new requirements about burning stuff and fireworks stuff? And, or will we be doing that next year when they come in?
I don't think anything's changed for them as far as selling fireworks. They're all legal fireworks. I think what changes should the fire marshal declare an extreme fire danger, that's when the city commission then could put a ban in place of all fireworks, according to that, which was passed in February. So I think we could all work with the business so that way they can notify them of the potential next year. This year, there's, it's not going to be an extreme fire danger, but at least they'll be notified when they apply for their business license. The potential should it be an extreme fire danger so they know what to expect. I think there's other businesses such as Softred Myers sells them. And I'm sure some other retailers sell some too. So we'll notify them. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Wiley, I don't see the ordinance in the packet here for me to sign.
I'll have it ready for you.
Okay.
So I believe that under the charter, Section 34, we do have to read the by title and have a vote twice.
Okay, that's fine.
For two readings.
Yes, let's do it.
So can we have a motion for adoption of ordinance number 25-1009 in the second reading by title only?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Aye.
Let me read it by title.
Okay.
Ordinance number 25-1009, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City revising the city code by adding municipal code Chapter 88, excuse me, 8.23, outdoor burning and declaring an emergency.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Adam Marl?
Aye.
And Mayor Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Now it's effective. Well, it will be, I guess, when I sign it or you sign it, then it'll be super effective. Okay, that's, thank you for all the work on that. This is absolutely needed. And then fortunately, already in the news, there has been one fire that was set with fireworks, as I noted, in Oregon. So here we go. Hopefully, nobody will be
You're welcome. I'd like to thank Ryan Kruski for his hard work on this.
Yes.
He put a lot of it together.
Everybody in your department that touched this in any way, thank you to everyone. All right, last but not least, we have on our agenda, item number 9C, Downtown Oregon City Association Memorandum of Understanding. Mr. Graham?
Good evening, Commissioners. James Graham here, Economic Development Manager. And I'm here to present the new memorandum of understanding for 2025, 2027 MOU between the city and downtown association, DOKA. As in, as you are aware, we provide, the city provides DOKA with $60,000 per year at a total of $120,000 for the biennium. And in return, DOKA provides a number of deliverables to us. And one of the, I won't go over all of them, but I'll just highlight three. One of the deliverables they provide to us is to provide at least three events on behalf of the city, which is the first city celebration, trick or treat event, and the holiday tree lighting event. They also, they also provide, they will provide cross-promotion utilizing our travel tourism brand and logo. And then they will also provide some financial statements, not, not for the public record, but financial statements so that we can see their progress as they go forward. We could certainly comment generally about their financial situation, but their financial statements will not be part of the public record. So those are the three main deliverables along with what we would deliver. Also, a special note here, as you know, we will have a, we have a new organization on the horizon called Organization Destination Oregon City, Inc. And that is our new DMO. And in that, the city provides hundreds of thousands of dollars to both of these organizations. We do look forward to seeing how they will work together to promote tourism and develop the tourism industry for the city. So with that said, that's my presentation.
Are there any questions? I note for the record that the downtown association secretary is in the room. Did you want to say anything other than pass it? Well, if you want to come up, are there any questions for? Okay, if there are no questions, Rocky, any questions? You're off the hook. All right, so let's have a motion.
I'll move to approve the Downtown Oregon City Association Memorandum of Understanding for the 2025, 2027 biennium.
Second.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Adam Marl?
Aye.
And Mayor Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Communications.
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
It's all quiet on the western front, as they say. All right, Chief? You weren't expecting that, were you? I just want to give you an opportunity. Is there anything fun and exciting happening at Public Works that we want to report on? Okay, all right. Looks like everything is quiet in the city. Everything is working well. Again, thank you to all the staff for all of your work. I do want to report that there was an excellent Lamprey Festival on the 26th of June. I attended on behalf of the city, gave some welcoming remarks, and got there too late to have any samples of Lamprey. And I'm, you know, very dismayed about that, but maybe next time. There was, I had a chance to talk with the Chair of the Willamette Falls Trust, Chief Yellowwash, for a little bit, and also talked to several of the elders who were there attending. There was a mix of tribes, not just the Yakima, but some others. So that was great. Also, want to remind people that on the 26th of June, we have the, excuse me, 26th of July, we have the First City Festival. I encourage everybody to attend. It's going to be an amazing event. And I think we finally figured out that the city started this thing back in about 1994. So if you do the math, First City Festival, with the exception of COVID year, has been continuously going on. And it is one of the signature events at the City of Oregon City and in the City of Oregon City, and it's going to be amazing. The other thing that I want to announce is that on July 15th, the Willamette Falls Landings and Heritage Area Coalition is having a rereading history event on, at their new location at Historic Westland City Hall. That is at 6:00 PM. It's the book that they will be reading is called Breaking Chains. It's about slavery on the trail in the Oregon Territory by R. Gregory Noakes, who is a local author. Myself and former Mayor Axelrod will be facilitating that discussion, and everybody is invited.[1782.74]